Okay, let's go ahead and start. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to Gina Wingfield this evening for providing beautiful cello music. Thank you.[15.34][15.34](applause). And Susan Miyamoto in the back on the piano as well. Thank you, Susan. It's good to see you.[23.23][23.23](applause). All right, our invocation tonight is potentially being provided by Sylvester Scott. Is he here this evening? Okay, then. A invocation will then be provided by our city manager, Mr. Aaron Adams. Flag salute by Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Mike Nigar.
Would you please stand? Please bow your head. Dear me Father, Lord, we just give you thanks for this day, this time to conduct the business of the city. We give you glory and honor for the city that Temecula has become, the people of it. We ask your wisdom and discernment be displayed here this evening by this city council, this city staff, and we give you all the thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please face the flag and say with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Camachero is absent. Councilmember Edwards is absent. Councilmember Nigar.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Ron.
I am here. Okay, first up, a presentation of certificate of recognition to Rancho Car Wash for your 30th anniversary. All right, you guys want to come forward to the podium there.[130.06][130.06](cough). All right, and Mr. Nigar is coming down to the podium to bring you the proclamation. Do you guys have anything to say? First of all, congratulations, 30 years in the city of Temecula. Wonderful. Glad to see you are still going strong.
Well, thank you very much. My name's Kirk Kuzmanic. I have Dave Lawrence here, general manager of 29 years, and a third-generation bumper wiper Kirk Kuzmanic Jr. with me. I'd like to thank the council and you mayor for this presentation. It's lovely. I, with a sad heart, have to say that my business partner and father passed away a month ago, and he was to be here with us today, which he was the rock of our organization, and we're carrying on his message to take care of customers and to make sure that we treat all of our employees as well as we do. Actually, in honor of that and the 30th anniversary, next month is our 30th anniversary, of which we're going to be rolling back our prices to where we were in 1988. So everybody can come and get a full-service car wash for $6.99. That's awesome.[214.84][214.84](laugh) So I thank you all.
Well, I'm sure he would have been proud to be here with you to receive this recognition. I have a certificate for you. City of Temecula Certificate of Recognition presented on behalf of the city council and to the citizen and from the citizens of the city of Temecula to Rancho Car Wash. The city council is proud to present the certificate of recognition to Rancho Car Wash on celebrating its 30th anniversary. Kirk Kuzmanic opened Rancho Car Wash in 1988, the first car wash in Temecula. Rancho Car Wash reclaims and reuses 100% of their water and practices environmentally safe procedures to protect water resources. Rancho Car Wash has two family-owned and operated locations that offer full-service car washes, lubin' oil, and auto detailing services. We congratulate Rancho Car Wash on celebrating 30 years of providing outstanding service to their customers and for their commitment to conserving resources and protecting the environment. In witness whereof, I have fixed my hand an official seal of the city, and it's signed by Mayor Matt Ron and by the city clerk. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.[290.12][290.12](applause). Thank you. All right, while Mr. Nigar makes his way back, we will go ahead and invite Mr. Jeremy Goldman from Southern California Edison to provide us with the 2017 reliability report. Good evening, sir. How are you doing?
Doing well. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeremy Goldman with Southern California Edison. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for allowing me to provide a brief update tonight. Just have a short presentation, a few slides, so if you have any questions, please feel free to chime in. So again, here at Edison, we are constantly working on upgrading the grid. If you look at that second bullet, over the next few years, we're spending quite a lot of money throughout our service territory, changing out different cables, poles, switches, and transformers, also modernizing the grid. One thing we're able to do now is add in remote switches, which a car hits a pole on Inez, instead of having a crew come out to switch load from one circuit to the next, we can now do that remotely. We'll get a sensor at our distribution operations center, and we will do that right before the crew even gets there, is move customers onto a new circuit. So reduces outage times and can be done in less than 10 minutes versus now, you're probably waiting an hour, hour and a half for a crew or troublemen to get out there and then fix a problem. So again, we're going to touch a little bit on the reliability numbers for last year. They're measured in three different ways. Momentary outages are MAFI, it's the number of times that the average customer is interrupted, and SADI and SAFI. SAFI is the number of times the average customer is interrupted by sustained outages throughout the year, and SADI is the cumulative numbers. So next slide will give us a really good perspective over the last few years. So if you look at that top row, that has the last stuff since 2014 of history, the red bar is the Edison system average, and the blue bar is the average here in the city of Temecula. So if you look at that top one for SADI, you can see for last year, you know, very well below the Edison average. For SAFI, again, for 2017, again, very, very low, and for MAFI, you know, again, lower than the Edison average across the territory. So these numbers are strong, you know, we're constantly working on upgrading the system every day, 365 days a year. Next couple of slides talk about what causes these repair outages. This is the SADI. You can see the top cause is the equipment failure. That could be underground cable failure, also, you know, operation, operational issues, whether it's our crew had gone out and inspected a transformer and they had to change it out right away. Oftentimes, we're mandated by the PUC if we catch something, we have a timeframe on how quickly we have to change it, change it out. So that's what that causes. Also, third parties, whether mylar balloons getting, gets in the line, or a car hits a pole, or digging by a third party who didn't call 811 before they started the work. So that's the SADI. This is the SAFI. Again, these numbers are really, match up with the SAFI as well. You can see very similar within a few percentage points as the last slide. Again, equipment failure, operations, and third party. So like I said, we're constantly working on the system. You can see this is a breakdown of all the work we have planned for 2018 here in the city of Temecula. It's kind of fuzzy, I apologize about that. I can get a list of everything we're doing, but pole replacements, circuit rebuilds, grid modernizations, different Rule 20 projects that developers have started. You can see we're working all over the city. I know we just changed out a vault near Old Town earlier this year. That's complete. So like I said, constantly working on the system, making sure it can withstand the restraints of today. Our franchise payment history, you know, we pay a franchise fee every year to the city that allows us to provide electrical service here. Franchise is a very complex formula. It's based on total billings in the city and also a number of miles of facilities that we have here. So you can see the last couple of years, you know, close to $1 million. And that hits the city account right after the first quarter of the year, so, end of March, early April. If your power's out, you know, call us. We actually have an app now. You can download it, sce.com/ outage. You can report outages. You can also see status of outages, both planned and unplanned. It's usually updated every 25 to 30 minutes, so it's pretty close to real time. It's a great tool. I encourage everyone to download it. You can also call us to report outages, 800-611-1911. That number's wrong, my apologies, but yeah, please, please call us if your power's out, download the app. Also, there's some different facts here. One of the game changers that we're really looking into now is battery storage. Battery storage is the future of the utility business. We actually just installed Tesla batteries at one of our substations in Ontario, and it allows us to provide power to 15,000 homes for four hours. So instead of adding on to the substation, we're able to add these batteries, and we were able to install them in 90 days. So if anyone is interested, let me know. I'm more than happy to take you down there in Antora. It's pretty impressive, and they look like big storage containers, so you would have no idea what's inside, so. Also, you hear a lot about green energy. Where are we today? So last year, we delivered a little over 44% of clean power, carbon-free. Also, if a customer wanted to go to 50% renewable today, that's something they could do, simple phone call to our customer service department. They can also do 100% renewable as well. We have a green rate. A lot of people don't know that. State has some very comprehensive clean energy goals, renewables, so we're working on meeting all those goals. We have our Pathway 2030 Plan, which I'll get into on the next slide, and, you know, we give back to local community, very active here in the communities that we serve. I know here in Temecula, we support the Boys and Girls Club, the Children's Museum, and other local groups. A lot of our employees live in Temecula. I think probably Temecula down here, we have more employees that live in the area. And again, just working towards that clean energy future. Top, top number shows you that we have almost 360,000 solar installations as of February of this year. I think I heard a stat that every six minutes, we turn on a new solar customer. If you drive an EV, there's a $450 credit or payment rebate you can get from Edison. Then really, we have our Pathway 2030 Plan, which will help modernize the grid and meet the, meet the state's clean energy goals and reduce greenhouse gases, so. And that's all I had. Any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Any, anything from the folks? Stu, Mike, no?
When he mentioned the storage, the battery storage, so is that because we're producing more electricity because of all the solar out there, and you're able to capture that and then release it when the sun goes down? Is that the purpose of the solar?
Correct, yeah. We're able to store it, so when we need it, like during, during a non, during at night, we're able to pump it back into the grid. And there's actually something called the duck curve, because it kind of looks like a duck, and you can see, because of all the solar going on right now, that there's so much solar being produced, it's actually creating excess electricity. That's a big issue that the PUC is looking at right now. So, but yeah, battery storage, we're actually mandated to implement a certain number of megawatts over the next few years by the PUC, but.
All right. Well, thank you. I just wanted to say it's impressive numbers for the city of Temecula. It's funny, because the numbers are so much better than, you know, Edison average, and then you mentioned that we also have more Edison employees living in Temecula than in anywhere else. So I don't know if there's a coincidence, but that's fantastic. So keep, keep your Edison employees moving to Temecula, because it seems to be working for us. Good discussion that you and I had the other day, too, on all the infrastructure upgrades and, you know, the amount of effort Edison's putting in. I also wanted to commend you guys for the improvements that you've done to your website and access to customer detail and information and programs to help reduce peak demand and usage. Really helpful for folks who want to, you know, help manage their own power usage at their home.
Yeah, that's a good point. I would really encourage everyone to go on sce.com and sign up. Make sure your email address and phone numbers are correct. There's a, if you are impacted by an outage, you can actually just sign up right there, so you'll, you'll get email, text messages, emails or text messages or phone calls, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, yeah, and the app's wonderful, too. So you guys are doing a great job for our city. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so we are done with that. We're going to move on to, let's see here, public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have four public comments and one under consent calendar, item eight.
All right, well, a total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is listed, limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker there is limited to five minutes. All right, can we have our first speaker, please?
Robert Cowell, to be followed by Lorena Spencer.
How are you? Today, well, we've been going from city to city, and I haven't been the front runner on this, but a friend of ours, in front of mine, attorney Sean Steele, his wife is Michelle Steele, was back in DC with Donald Trump last week, I think it was, on opt-out sanctuary cities, opt-out SB 54. So Sean Steele's husband, excuse me, Michelle Steele's husband, Sean Steele, is working with me and is willing to work with you to come up with some language to adopt by the city as a resolution. A resolution would be the minimus, he calls it. I don't know the terms exactly, but the minimus is what he calls sanctuary city opt-out. Amicus with a federal lawsuit, no cost, but not, not that effective until the case is appealed to the Ninth Circuit, would be the second one. File a joiner with a state lawsuit, join the city of Huntington Beach lawsuit. I know Huntington Beach wants us to join that lawsuit, and there's no cost to us. It's a good, it's a good thing. File a joiner to the federal action, join Orange County, wait until there's a hearing on June the 5th. There's no cost and no liability to you on that one either. The one that has liability and cost possibility is the one of doing ordinance, which require the police, but you don't have, you are a contract city. So in such, I have talked to Stan Sniff, and he is very, very aware of, of, of course, what's going on with SB 54. He had it reduced down to a, less than, by the way, is there a timer on this? That I know how much time I have? Well, anyway, not knowing how much time I have left, I, I would just like to say that we, he's willing to set up a conference call on Thursday at 1:00. I can give you the, later, I can give you the conference number and the, the phone number and the number to contact, and we'll put on Susan Tully Affair with Sean Steele, attorney Sean Steele, myself, and several, several other people, including you, if you'd like Stan Sniff is, he shares the information, but he shares it not to necessarily eyes, he shares it publicly to the public. So it goes on when people are let go out of jail, they immediately are, are put on the screen, just like any other sheriff's department around the country. The ACLU is going after City of Los Alamitos, but because they did an ordinance. I'd like you to think about your, our brothers, or if you want to call them our brothers, and the Border Patrol will live right in Marietta, not live in Marietta, they work out of Marietta, and the city of Marietta has their own police department.
Mr. Cowell, you're out of time, so if you could summarize, that'd be great.
Okay, well, just put it on the agenda. Join the, join the call if you would like that. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have our next speaker, please.
Lorena Spencer, to be followed by Patrice Lines.
Good evening, Ms. Spencer.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lorena Spencer, and I own the Painted Garden here in Old Town, Temecula. The city of Temecula has spent millions of dollars to welcome visitors to Old Town, our wineries, our golf courses, and many other businesses. We want these visitors comfortable, so that they will spread the word and feel encouraged to come back again and again. And in order to achieve this goal, we must make sure that they feel safe, secure, and bottom line, welcome. This brings me to an ongoing issue that needs to be addressed immediately. Restroom services in Old Town. They are beyond inadequate. They are embarrassing. The elderly, impaired, and many visitors who must get around in wheelchairs are being asked to hike uphill to City Hall to use the restrooms far too often. We need to make facilities more readily and conveniently accessible on level ground. For a time, the restrooms at the theater courtyard were open to the public. The problem was resolved. Now, for reasons that seem unclear, they are closed. This means only the Sixth Street restrooms and the ones at City Hall are available for most prime time hours. This is clearly a significant inconvenience for those shopping in the heart of Old Town who have difficulty negotiating the climb uphill to the restrooms. I personally have heard complaints, and I see how people leave earlier than planned, and they don't come back. If the theater's restrooms remain unavailable, the property between the Children's Museum and the mercantile would be an ideal location to build new restrooms. Perhaps it might encourage action if those with physical disabilities who find the two and a half blocks uphill to City Center a severe challenge to join me at the next council meeting and express their support of this extremely important issue. It makes no sense whatsoever to invest so heavily in encouraging visitors to enjoy the many wonders of Temecula, only to make them have to search and hike for restroom facilities in the jewel of the city, Old Town. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. All right, can we have our next speaker, please?
Patrice Lines, to be followed by Stella Stephens, and she is our final speaker on public comment.
Hi, hi, council. Please join with Bob and I on the conference call with Susan Tully and Sean Steele Esquire. It's free, and we really love to have at least one of you on the phone call. Thank you. So I have emailed you about that, just please let me know. SB 54 creates a roadblock and hat and ties law enforcement's hands, and its ability to do its job and thereby causes a public safety problem. I'm here tonight to ask you to join with the 40, almost 40 other cities, 10 or 11 counties that have opposed SB 54 and with a resolution, and that I'd like to ask you to do a resolution, put it on the agenda that you can discuss this further, and then perhaps a joiner with Huntington Beach's lawsuit, or join the amicus brief after it goes to court in June. I would like you to, as I mentioned, to discuss this and put it on the agenda, if you could do that tonight, and remember, evil triumphs when good men do nothing. Thank you, and California great again. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can we have the final speaker, please?
Stella Stephens.
Is this the overhead?
Sure. It will be, it's three minutes.
Is there like a timer?
There's, on the podium, there's some lights. They're working on that, hang on. I think that's as far out as it goes, fellows.
Well, okay, anyway, I'm here to ask you to put the oppose sanctuary SB 54 on the agenda. It is a safety issue, just to put a little example, there's a little gal named Grace Aguilar earlier this year that was run over by a three-times deported Mexican national who was driving under the influence. He did a hit-and-run, he left, they finally caught him. This is a real public safety issue. There are a number of things that need to be discussed. I would really like for this city council to put it on the agenda. Also, I'd like you to join in with, this particular list, by the way, was weeks ago. We now, there are 10 counties plus 40 cities, and one last night that went on, which was Carlsbad. This is a huge public safety issue. There are a number of things that, that come to play that most people who have not read either the lawsuit and/or SB 54, AB 450, or AB 103, there are a number of things that adversely impact business. I know that this city is really concerned about tax dollars and so forth, and I also think Blue Lives Matter, and our police people, the sheriff, the police, the Border Patrol, they are risking their lives each and every day that they go out in the field, and this is part of the problem with the circular argument that for them to have a warrant to go ahead and do a transfer, in order for them to know that they can get a warrant, they have to know the name. Well, the illegals have multiple names, so therefore, they don't know the names, so they can't issue the warrant. So when somebody is released, or getting ready to get transferred or released, whatever it is, anybody that is afraid of getting in trouble, and that would be certainly the police and the sheriff and the Border Patrol, when there's a question of whether or not you can do something, and any one of these three laws comes into play, when you're in doubt and you're faced with $2,000 to $25,000 fines, I know if I were a police officer's wife, I would say, don't entertain it, because I don't want you to lose your job, and I don't want us to lose our house. So this needs to be an agendized item. Please put it on there. It's a huge public safety issue, and I think that's about it. Also, there's no cost filing a joiner letter with Huntington Beach, even though they're charter city. The next opportunity to file an amicus brief is after June 20th, when the lawsuit from Jeff Sessions regarding SB 54 and the other two laws that I mentioned is going to be held. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, so that concludes public comment. Do we have any city council reports?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
I attended the graduation of our first-ever construction program, construction training program, and it was amazing. We had 12 graduates, but the family and the friends and the support that came along with those 12 graduates was just mind-blowing. And they, they really took this seriously as a next step into their career path or opportunities, and I even got emails from mothers whose son took the class and say that they, they've got this fervor now of trying to find a job in the construction field because of this class. So kudos to the city and Charles Walker, who actually put this program together, because he did an amazing job, and it, it really did change 12 lives, so, amazing.
All right, well, thanks for sharing. All right, let's move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolution. Item number two, approve action minutes of May 8, 2018. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve the city treasurer's report as of March 31, 2018. Five, adopt a resolution authorizing participation in the Public Agency Retirement Services, PARZ, Post-Employment Benefits Trust Program, to be administered by PARZ and US Bank. Number six, approve the purchase from BMW Motorcycles at Riverside of two BMW police motorcycles for fiscal year 1718, and one BMW police motorcycle for fiscal year 1819 for the Temecula Police Department. Item number seven, approve a sponsorship and economic development funding agreement with the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival Association for the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival fiscal year 1718. Eight, approve agreements with Convergent Technologies LLC for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of a citywide surveillance system. Item number nine, approve the third amendment to the agreement for consulting services with Environmental Science Associates for an environmental impact report for the proposed Cypress Ridge development. Item number 10, approve participation in the Riverside County Mortgage Credit Certificate Program. Number 11, approve an agreement for consultant services with Michael Baker International Company for Inez Road Improvements, Rancho Vista Road to La Paz Road, PW 17-17. Item 12, approve the installation of a high-visibility rectangular rapid-flashing beacon crosswalk system on Deer Hollow Way at Great Oak High School. And finally, number 13, accept And finally, number thirteen, accept certain public streets into the city maintained system with track mapped 30264-6 located southeasterly of the intersection of Pachanga Parkway and Wolf Valley Road.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent. I'm going to register a no vote on item twelve, and I think, and I'll move the balance, but I think there was one, somebody wanted to pull.
Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker on item eight.
Item eight, speaker on item number eight. Okay, well, let's go ahead and move the balance of...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Unfortunately, item twelve requires three votes.
Understood.
So that'll have to be continued to the next meeting.
Okay, and let's go ahead and pull that item and item number eight for the speaker, and see if we could get a motion in a second, please, on the balance.
I'll move the balance.
All right, let's go ahead and cast your votes, gentlemen. Okay, and that passes three zero with Mr. Comacher and Ms. Edwards absent. Can we have the speaker for item number eight, please?
Bob Cowell.
Okay, number eight, it's four million dollars for, I looked at the PDF number two, four million dollars for a lot of surveillance cameras around the city. In Marietta, we got rid of, at least the ones we knew of, anyway, the traffic cameras. I don't know if these are traffic cameras or if they're not. Surveillance cameras, did anybody, I don't know, I didn't know we were under surveillance like what it says in that PDF that I looked at. There were like twenty-one different sites where their cameras are located. It would be nice to know where they are, maybe they're located in that, somewhere in that PDF, I'm not sure. Before, you spent four million dollars on surveillance, I just remember times in the past where putting up cameras thirty years ago was impossible to do without having a, the ACLU all over you, so they had a hard time in LA just putting up some cameras in some very bad places. Having said that, I would recommend to, to review what these cameras are really for, why they're there, and, and do they actually add to the public without infringing on the public welfare? I mean, are they, are they, you know, people's right to privacy is really important to me. Maybe it's not to other people, but it's very important to me. So just my two cents on that, or four million dollars, I should say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nigard.
Yeah, maybe for the benefit of the speaker, we can just have a quick staff report, maybe answer some of his questions. If you've never been to our, our traffic control room, I think you'd find it amazing, where we pretty much have a camera at every intersection, almost every intersection, that we're able to adjust during peak times, but maybe we can have a quick staff report.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The item before you tonight for your consideration is to approve agreements with Convergent Technologies for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of the city's existing citywide surveillance system. The citywide surveillance project has been included in the city's five-year capital improvement program, which will update the city's surveillance system to today's standards and improve overall safety and security at public parks, city facilities, and traffic intersections for monitoring traffic flows. The installation of all components, hardware, and infrastructure will be accomplished over the next two to three years. The city originally awarded an agreement to Triad Consulting to assess the city's existing surveillance system for effectiveness and deficiencies. We worked collaboratively with Community Services as well as Public Works and Public Safety to address any existing needs, and following the assessment, this consultant designed an enhanced surveillance system which addressed security improvements, considered city operation services, and conforms to legal mandates and maintains a safe and prepared community. With approval of this agreement, the project will update core system infrastructure, install cameras at twenty-four owned city sites, twenty-five intersections, and several viewing stations for emergency operations, traffic control, and public safety. The preventative maintenance agreement will maintain the integrity of the system and prolong the life of the system, and this concludes my staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions, as well as Convergent is in the audience.
No questions, I'll move the item.
I'll second, and I'd like to just comment that I really do believe that these cameras add a level of protection to the public, especially in parks. You know, it seems like you go by some of these parks and you see people hanging out, homeless people, or, you know, whoever, whoever looks like they're, and if I'm a young family and I feel uncomfortable at a park because of this, I want to be able to call the city and say, you know, what's going on? Could you have someone check this out? And then we have immediate contact with that park just by looking at that camera and saying, oh yeah, I can verify that, you know, there is a group hanging out there, and we can send, you know, one of our hot teams over and check it out, so I fully believe in this program.
All right, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to add something to what Mr. Cowell said, these, we do not have red light running cameras, and nor are these proposed to be such.
Right, and it's a great, I think, a great benefit for public safety. It's an opportunity for us, like so many other cities, to use the technology appropriately. There's a lot of safeguards in the current and existing law that help deal with how and why and where we can deploy these systems, but it's genuinely meant to help with, resolve a lot of our public safety issues. And, you know, this certainly wasn't something that happened overnight, this is something your offices have been working on for several years now, is my understanding, so it's taken a long time for us to get here, and we appreciate the staff's diligence on getting us to this point. Anyway, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Stewart on item number eight. If we could get your second there and register our votes, please. Okay, and that passes three zero with Mr. Comacher and Ms. Edwards absent. All right, so now moving on to item number twelve. Let's see, Mr. City Attorney, how would you like to handle that this evening? Should we just continue it till the next meeting? Is that, is that appropriate?
What is item twelve?
Item twelve, we're pulling on the traffic at Crosswalk?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that had been part of the motion.
No, we haven't covered that one yet, so continue that. Okay, can we get a motion in a second to continue that to next meeting, please? Motion by Mr. Nigard, second by Mr. Stewart. Go ahead and vote on that real quick, and that passes three zero, and we'll see that at the next meeting. Okay. Going to recess this meeting to the scheduled meeting for Temecula Community Services District. Mr. Stewart.
I'd like to call the meeting for the Community Service District to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Director Edwards is absent. Director Nigard?
Here.
Director Ron?
I'm here.
Director Comacher is absent, or President Comacher is absent. Vice President Stewart?
Here.
Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay. Okay, next we have the consent calendar. So, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless a member of the Community Service District requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number fourteen, approve the minute actions of May 8, 2018. Item number fifteen, set public hearing to approve TCSD proposed rates and charges for fiscal year 2018-19. Do we have...
Move the items.
A second?
It's been moved in second, please vote. All right, do we have a director's report tonight?
Mr. Vice President, Commissioner Schwenk has a few items to cover later, so nothing else for me to report tonight. Thank you.
And are you going to do that at the end of the meeting?
That's correct, I'll do it at the end, thank you.
All right, great. Do we have a general matters?
Nothing tonight?
Nothing, okay. Any board of directors' reports? Nope. All right, then we will move back to the city council meeting and adjourn this one.
All right, move back to city council meeting, call that back to order. Let's see, we have departmental reports, commission. Let's start with Mr. Sullivan. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief report on the fourth Thursday of this month, at six o'clock, the Public Safety and Traffic Commission will be meeting across the hall in the conference center, and we will be receiving a report from city on the traffic mitigation measures that are proposed and coming to Temecula for the next few years, and it'll give an oversight as to some wonderful projects that will really relieve some congestion in the city.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Yeomans, good evening.
Good evening. Our last planning commission meeting, we once again took on the Canes issue over on Margarita, and it was a great meeting, both the residents stepped up, gave us their concerns, the applicant took the concerns into consideration, came us some happy ground. The big item was the hours of operation, which they cut down considerably, and with a little work on the building to block the headlights and sound, worked out really well, so it passed. It's a very good project. Good, good interworking between citizens and the applicant.
All right, all right, thank you. And Mr. Schwenk?
Good evening, Mayor Ron. I have three items for you tonight. We've got a nice slide that's up there. So our first ever concert this Saturday is a tribute to heroes. We typically do this over Veterans Day, but now we've sort of branched out and we're going to do this for Memorial Day as well, so this Saturday, 3:00 PM here at Civic Center, come join the Temecula Valley Symphony and the Tribute to Heroes Concert. It's always a great night. And then on Monday morning, here again at the steps of City Hall, Memorial Day observance, come in honor and remember everyone who has given everything for this country. That's always a very somber event. And then finally, Wednesday, May 30th, Veterans Park Playground reopening, another fantastic park that we're going to open here in the city, thanks in large part to Major S. It's 3:00 PM in the afternoon, Wednesday's a one o'clock dismissal, I'm guessing there's going to be a bunch of TVSD students here for that day. Very excited to open another beautiful park. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, can we get our, let's see, Police Department? Good evening, thanks for being here.
Good evening. Oh, thank you. For the month of April, Temecula Police Department generated 7,011 file numbers. This number includes calls for service as well as traffic and parking citations. Our traffic enforcement team issued 1,787 traffic citations, in addition to eighty parking citations. They also investigated 196 traffic accidents, ranging from major injury incidents to minor fender benders, and also hit and run incidents. And they also investigated ninety-two driver under the influence investigations. Our commercial enforcement officer issued ninety-one citations, and our hot team responded to thirty-nine calls for service related to loitering and panhandling issues, and our homeless outreach team also pulled twelve outreach files for the homeless. That's our citations.
All right, thank you. You know, I'd be, I'd be curious, because we always hear about folks talking about red light runners and all that, and I know you guys have ramped up your efforts quite a bit on that. I'm wondering if maybe, when we get toward mid-year report, if we're able to pull through January through June, pull the statistics and, and sort of come up with some numbers on sort of our total call volume and, and response and service for the first half of eighteen, but then be able to break it down percentage-wise, maybe, for residents versus non-residents? Because I know we're a significant tourism economy now, and I'd just be kind of curious to see, you know, for those folks who are the red light violators and a lot of the other citations and things we're seeing out there, see if that's, you know, predominantly visitors to our community or our community itself. That'd be an interesting statistic to take a look at.
Yeah, that would be.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, I got a question. The ninety-two DUIs, was that an actual, you, you guys pulled over ninety-two people for DUIs?
Yes, those are ninety-two arrests.
Ninety-two arrests. Is that high? That seems really high for me, for some reason.
It, it varies from month to month.
Okay.
But it matters if we have a checkpoint during that time, sometimes it goes up.
Okay, all right.
And are you distinguishing DUI types from alcohol versus other in the...
We do, yes.
Okay, that'd be interesting.
Not on this statistical report, but yeah, we...
Yeah, that'd be an interesting one, particularly with the cannabis issue as it emerges, maybe we can get a mid-year on that as well. Yeah? Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. All right, let's see, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, before we leave the police, did you want to play the Kent Hindergard?
Oh, yes, please.
I think we have it queued up in the back.
Do you want me to go over that real quick?
Yes, please, sorry.
On Tuesday, May 8th, the Temecula Police Department had memorial for the 25th anniversary in remembrance of Deputy Hindergard, who was murdered in the line of duty on May 9th, 1993. We have a quick, what, seven-minute video memorializing this event.
At 01:33 hours on May 9th, 1993, Deputy Kent Hindergard answered a dispatch call, just like more than nine thousand police officers do across the United States every day. A neighbor at the Sycamore Terrace Apartments in Temecula heard yelling and pounding in the apartment above them, and was concerned for the young woman who lived there. Deputy Hindergard requested backup as he spoke to Connie, but then the suspect was seen walking in the common area with his twelve-year-old son. Deputy Hindergard approached and spoke with the suspect, asking him for identification. Connie heard a shot ring out and saw the suspect running. Deputy Har entered the apartment complex, and Connie flagged him down, telling him shots had been fired, and she thought Deputy Hindergard was in pursuit of the suspect. Running towards Deputy Hindergard's cruiser, however, Deputy Har, he broadcast the words which every one of us working as police officer fear above all others, "1199, shots fired, officer down." As more units rushed to the scene in response, and a description was broadcast of the suspect, they feared the ambulance was taking too long, and so they grabbed Deputy Hindergard into a patrol unit, while Deputy Har and other continued providing CPR all the way to the hospital. But all of their efforts were in vain, as it was too late, and our brother, our loving husband, father, and true friend had died. While other units searched the, searched for the suspect, deputies entered the apartment and discovered Ally. A beautiful, loving mother to her daughter Brittany had been strangled to death by the suspect. The suspect kidnapped his son and later released him on the side of the road. Patrol units located the suspect, and he committed suicide, ending this tragic day and beginning a lifetime of mourning those who were taken from us way too soon.
It was the most heartbreaking thing I've ever experienced. I can't even imagine how you felt, Lynda, or anyone out there who else has lost a family member unexpectedly, horrifically, or a tragic experience. And my heart also goes out to those other victims of, from this unspeakable act of evil that took these folks and this pitcher to my left away from us. On the evening of Kent's death, that next morning when I was there, she said to me she was awakened in the middle of the night by Marissa kicking and screaming in her bed, laughing and giggling, moving about as if someone was tickling. Lynda told me she comforted Marissa and put her right back to sleep, as if nothing had even happened. This seemed strange, because Marissa had never done this before, but we did learn later that Marissa's laughter started at the same time Kent was killed. And then Lynda told me the first thing Kent did when he got home from work each time was tickle Marissa pink. To me, it appeared Kent paid one more last visit. I will never forget Kent. Since finding the truth, I celebrate Kent's life now, every year, and the life that he actually led to me too. Every time I think of Kent, this guy here to my right, I came across this one verse years ago, John 15:13, "Greater love has no more than this than to lay down one's life force runs."
If I could talk to him now, I would say many things, but among them, thank you for trying to help my daughter Ally. Thank you for trying to protect my daughter and our six-year-old granddaughter that night. Thank you for being a caring, strong, dedicated young man who wanted to help his community. Back in 1993, Temecula had a population of about 35,000 people. We didn't have many services, there was no justice center. The Violence Against Women Act didn't come to pass until 94, and both of these helped provide needed funds for services that help victims of crime. I do encourage people to get involved, to join and volunteer with support groups and organizations, donate time by trying to help others. I believe with all my heart... time by trying to help others. I believe with all my heart, this is what my daughter Allison wants me to do.
Later on in life, I have a much different perspective on domestic violence and its toll on our society. And after that, safe alternatives for everyone, safe, formed here in Temecula. I really, really believe in the cause. Safe alternatives for everyone is out there preventing domestic violence, which is another lesson from this tragedy of losing Kent.
At the time, I worked as a surgical trauma intensive care nurse at Loma Linda University Medical Center. And it was an odd day for me. I was able to actually transfer my patient to a lower-level care, and they allowed me to go home early that day, which never, ever happened. And so, I was actually able to eat dinner with Kent the last day that he was alive. And that was such a treat to me to be able to have that last meal with him and kiss him goodbye. Another person that I thought about a lot through the years besides Brittany, Ally's daughter, was also Jeremy, the perpetrator's son. He was only 13 years old at the time, and he had to be there to hear the gunshot that killed Kent. His father made him get into the car, and he knew that, his father told him, "I killed that cop. I shot him." And he said, "Please, Dad, don't kill yourself, please." He knew his dad was going to kill himself. His dad dropped him off on the side of the 15 freeway. I've never heard how he's doing, and I know that his life must be so hard, just trying to process that every day. So, my heart goes out to him too. I just wish that I could tell him that I don't hate him. I don't even hate his father. I just hate what his father did. I don't hate anyone. I pray for them.
We do not speak the suspect's name today because he has no power or identity here. Instead, we rise up those who matter. Kent, Ally, their children, and their loved ones. Although we are here today to mourn and honor their passing, it is not Kent and Ally's tragedy that we remember. It is their individual characters that we celebrate. And we give thanks to all of those who care and love them. We are here today not as a community that grieves, but as a family that embraces one another. As a family, we mourn all the sadness that breaks each of our hearts from this tragedy. But we also look around and see the good people who have built strength from pain, courage from fear, as we honor these two heroes. Kent, you will never be forgotten. You are one of us then, now, and always.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to say it was a beautiful ceremony. It's a tragic loss for our city 25 years ago now. But beautiful ceremony and it's left an indelible mark on our city. And even after all those years, the number of folks who showed up, it was stunning to see the outpouring of support for the family and the victims. All right. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. That video, I'd just like to acknowledge Jonathan Hall, who put a lot of time and energy into putting that together. So, I appreciate Jonathan's work and being there that day as well. And just one other thing I want to promote, if we have that slide that we could put up, is just to remind everyone that we have a city app out there and it's free. You can get it through the Apple Store. And it really is the most expeditious way to report anything that you see, whether it be graffiti, whether it be potholes, whether it be things you want to convey to the city of Temecula. This really is the most expeditious way. So, we encourage everyone to use this, get this app, and we can follow up quicker according to that. So, with that, I have nothing further. Mr. Mayor?
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. In closed session tonight, the council approved a settlement agreement with scale on the Altaire litigation. The vote was 3 to 0 with council members Comacher and Edwards absent. The settlement agreement will be on file in the city clerk's office.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, looks like we have a bunch of our high school kids in the back. Is that right? Where are we all from? Great Oak? Anybody from Great Oak? No. No. Chaparral? No. Marietta Mesa. All right. Well, Marietta, you came to Temecula City Hall to complete your government assignments. All right. Well, thank you for joining us this evening. All right. I don't know about extra credit, but we don't have any influence over that. But I believe you're supposed to be here for an hour. We're five minutes away from our hour being up. We could either continue this or we're going to end the meeting and you guys can hang out here till 8 o'clock. Your call. All right. I like the idea. Let's just pretend it's a full hour and we'll call it an evening. Adjourn the meeting. Till next time. See you then.